Street will cut comments if you'd like to watch virtually, you can check our agenda and there's a Zoom link on the back page of the agenda, or you can watch on Facebook Live. Can I have a call to order, please? A roll call.
Paul Gravy present. David Farag present.
Chris Plex present.
And Ellen Mar present. Thank you. Since Mr. Plex is virtual tonight, any votes we take will be by roll call. May I invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance if you'd like to? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As some of you who come frequently or are listening virtually can tell, we have new microphones, new audio visuals. So hopefully everyone in the audience can hear us. Mr. Burnett, can you hear us okay in the back there? Perfect. Great. Thank you. And anyone has any issues on the audio or visual side, just let us know and we'll do our best. So at this point, is there any public comment? Nope. Okay. No public comment. We're going to move on to licenses and permits. Our first up is the Cohasset Triathlon. Mr. Burnett, Burnett, come up. Name an address, please.
You just press that on because it's. Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Bill Burnett. I am at twenty eight Mohawk Way here in town. May I start?
Yes.
Great. Oh, wait, one. Okay. Well, first, first, this may seem self-serving, my comment, but I want to thank the board, as I do every year, for volunteering your time and all the hard work you're putting into the betterment of our community. And it's a lot like what I like to do, like to say about the triathlons, frankly. Back in two thousand and seven, I was with a bunch of my buddies around a fire pit. We were talking about what can do for the town and we came up with the triathlon. And back then it was a relatively new concept and to see where it's gone is just tremendous for me and and the community. Such a positive event for the town, bringing in a high-end event and a very positive active engagement. So I'm coming for you tonight to have your approval on both events. The adult race, as I call it, is on approval for June twenty eighth. We can start there first. I've talked to Sandy Beach Association. They are good with the date. Talking with Chief Quigley, Chief Doc Ray, Lori Gibbons, everything looks good so far. And we start registration in a couple of weeks on December first. That's the reason for coming for you tonight. We'll, we can come back again to see you all in May, if needed be as well. So I'm asking for the board's approval for the Cohasset Triathlon for June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty six.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is Chief on or he is?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep. Hey, chief. This is, you know, one of our annual events. I know significant change to the public safety component?
No, we, we have a solid plan that we've been using for years and every year we fine tune it a little bit as we will this year. You know, we'll, we'll schedule multiple meetings for that fine tuning between January and the event, but, but no issues with this at all. One of the things we do ask, in addition to the, the event permit is an entertainment license for the day and also permission to have a way to opening up the RTF on the date of the event.
Late, late, oh, because of the, the try goes.
Goes right through the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Have we discussed that with Brian Joyce?
Uh, yeah, we, we have and, and he's okay with, we've, we've been doing it for years, but we just want to make sure it's okay with the, with the board before we make any.
Okay. Okay. All right. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Burnett?
Just a comment is that the, the Cohasset Triathlon and then the kids' triathlon that came into play is, is turned into be one of the signature events in Cohasset and brings so many people to the town. And we, you know, a couple of signature events throughout the year, but this is turned into one of, become now a tradition, I think, for people. So it's, uh, it's a great event and hopefully it'll, you know, and how many years has it been now that this is the?
This will be our eighteenth.
Eighteenth, yeah.
Year. That's right.
Yeah, it's, it's terrific. So hopefully it'll be many more years.
I've, I've thought about that, but we'll just, we'll just, we'll take that. We'll take it year by year. But, but you're right. I mean, it's every year and I, I emphasize that to keep up, it's a lot of the details and keeping it high end every, every year is an immense undertaking, but it's important to me because I love this town. I wanna, it's really, really good for us. And so I just want to keep it going that way. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Oh, sorry. And just, one of the things too, we, we, we use this, the police department uses this as a regional training event. So it, it exercises us in working with the partner agencies as well as the, the Coast Guard, the different harbor departments, EMS and Metrolec. So it's, so it's a full regional call out and it's a, it's a, you know, we, we get to use the command post and re-familiar, re-familiarize ourselves every year. So it's, it's great in that regard. It's a training event for us as well.
I, I was going to say that I, if I'm recalling correctly, last year you alluded to some type of stellar standing your event has on a national level.
We are, thank you. First, yeah, that is, is still the case for, this is a, it's a sprint distance event. So it's a quarter of a mile swim, a twelve mile bike and a three mile run. And in that distance, we are the top twenty five largest sprint race in the country. So the twelve hundred, thirteen hundred people register for it. And that's really, really big for an event the size.
Yeah, it's great. Mr. Grady, anything?
No, I just want to say thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Me, I think the motion will approve immediately and gladly.
Okay, so. Mr. Flex, do you have anything to add?
It's a great event. Thank you, Bill, for running it every year.
Thank you.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve the Cohasset Triathlon event for June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty six?
Still moved and gladly.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. May I have a motion to approve an entertainment license for the Cohasset Triathlon for June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty six? And a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, this, this should also grow very briefly too, is on August first, we've, we've adopted, this is now maybe our eighth year now. The idea of a kids' triathlon, these are ages six, little tykes, little six years old to twelve years of age, using the Cohasset Swim Center pool. That brings in two hundred and fifty kids. That is one of my favorite events, frankly. It's so fun. The kids have a great time. But August first is the date that it's a Saturday. Chief Quigley, any thoughts? I'm sorry, you shouldn't be asked, chief. Chief, any comments on the, on the kids' race?
No, again, that's a solid event and we have a great plan. We, we shut that, that stretch of Sawyer Street down for a short time. And it's actually really a fun event.
Yeah, I mean, the store is only closed for about ninety minutes at maybe at most. So it's, it's minimal impact to the community and thanking the, the Music Circus for their, the use of their parking lot. So approve, a vote for August first.
Okay, is this just an event license or is there?
It is also an entertainment.
Entertainment license. Okay, so we'll do this. May I have a motion to approve an event license for the Cohasset Kids' Triathlon on August first, two thousand and twenty six?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
May, roll call, please.
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. May I have a motion to approve an entertainment license for the Cohasset Kids' Triathlon, August one, two thousand and twenty six?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to come back, you know, sometime in May if you wish, if you have material changes, but I think we're all really comfortable with the event. You don't have to if you don't want.
I was gonna ask you that. Yeah, well, now I can coordinate that, coordinate that with Chief Quigley as well, if that's needed.
Yep.
Great. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, next up is the Town Common Story Walk.
I'll just leave it on because.
Yeah, we have more people coming up. This is for the Paul Pratt Library Permission to Use the Town Common for Story Walk with Book for December and January.
Yes.
Some addresses, please.
Bronwyn Nelson, eighty four Linden Drive.
Katie Holden of the Historical Society, twenty nine Norfolk Road.
Yes. So we've done this, I think this is, I think it was twenty twenty one was the first year that we had the story walk on the common. I hope everyone's familiar with it. I can go through the description if, if necessary, but I think everyone knows what it is. It's currently at the Pumpkin Patch. We'd like to move it over to the common and we have our book selected. It's called It's Winter. It's really cute. And then the, the snag in the plan is originally we were going to have it, we want to have it there for when the stroll and the fair is in, in place for December and into January. And then we were going to have the Historical Society, Katie can talk about what their plan is in February and March. They were hoping to delay their installation until April and May because of Patriots' Day. They're doing a display that ties into the Revolutionary War. So the question is, would you prefer us to move it to another location for February and March? Which we can do either back to the library. I had talked to Michelle about perhaps possibly moving it to the Little Pocket Park, which is between the post office and the community center, which is town owned, as we found out. And then move it back to the common for, for their display. Or we could leave it in place and change out to a different children's book, a spring book or something like that. Do you want to talk about what you're gonna do? It's really great.
We, the library, we're very grateful. The library was willing to partner with us last year in which we had information in the storyboards about historic homes and historic information about buildings on the common. And we would like, we are excited that they're continuing to partner with us and we would love with the two fiftieth anniversary of America to focus on the history of how the Revolutionary War impacted Cohasset. And we would like to include information about Revolutionary War soldiers and and maybe even some of the town votes and events that led up to such as the include information about the Boston Tea Part, the three Boston Tea Party participants from Cohasset. And so it's going to take us some time to put these together. And last year, I think we had in February, maybe February, March, and it's very cold and frozen. And if we're putting all this together, we would appreciate it being more aligned up with April and April and May, when more people are on the common and, and it's easier to install the storyboards. And yeah, and so and kind of line it up with Patriots' Day and, and so giving us the time to put it together. So we're excited.
I think it's gonna be great. So that's the, the issue.
Okay.
We, we, or either way, you, whatever you prefer, we, we'll make it work. It's, it's fine with us. I would say from a facility, the facilities would prefer if we left it in place because they're the ones that, that move it. My only concern about moving it is if the ground is frozen, it's going to be a challenge. We can certainly remove it. It's installing it somewhere else will be difficult because there's kind of anchors that, that hold it in place. But again, we can, we can work with whatever is preferred. So, yeah.
Yeah, what do you?
I would prefer to leave it in place and we can switch out to a different display.
I remember the ice skaters really appreciating.
Yeah.
Ice skate and then they would go check out the storyboards.
Yeah, the common's busy all the time. I'm sure more in the spring. But I, I think it's just a great showcase for whatever it is that we do. I just didn't want to, didn't know if that would be too long of a time period to have something on there. So that's.
I, I think it'd be great and due to the uniqueness of it and sort of the one-time event of having the, the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the country, I think it'd be okay to install it and leave it there from one to the other, you know, due to those factors. So.
Okay, great, great.
Mr. Flex?
I agree with Mr. Farag. That sounds good.
Okay, okay. So just so we're all clear, so the storyboards would go up in December and it'd be up through May?
Yes. Is that how long you'd like it?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I like the idea of changing up the book.
Absolutely, yeah.
Went for the spring.
We might do a, maybe a children's revolutionary book, you know, something like that, because it will have President's Day. That might be a good, you know, tie-in. And so, yeah, we'd do it, we'd move it over there as soon as we can. I know that there's, I think the community center has something, I think it's the twenty ninth of November. So potentially maybe even before, before that, we'd like to have it in place. So essentially, yeah, for December and January with this book and then we'll, we'll come up with something for February and March.
Okay, the only thing I can think of, Michelle, is the senior class, the high school senior class usually puts up their senior portraits.
That's true.
Sometime in May because all the activities start, they get out of school, I don't know, the second week in May and.
The second week in May. And they go along. And they're, they're along North Main Street. Yeah. Well, maybe we could put it in a different location that wouldn't in, in, impact.
Yeah, I would just be cognizant, keep in mind, when to have them installed because I am in favor of leaving them up. Yep. You know, because taking them in and out does, doesn't seem to be productive and changing up the book is a great idea. But I would just, you know, ask you to, to kind of look at it and go back in your way back mind.
If they were there, it would give us the flexibility because if the weather is fine in March, then maybe we, you know, and things, stars align, maybe.
I had thought about maybe around the pond, but I don't know if it's, it's level enough as a, as a location to install it. I don't, I think, I, I looked at it the other day, but I, I don't think it's, it would work, but we can, we can find a spot that doesn't interact with the, the high school. That's, that's a good point.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, so we will have them up for the library from December through March and then the Historical Society, April and May.
Exactly.
Okay, so I guess we need two motions because they're two different entities. Can I have a motion to approve the Paul Pratt Library Story Walk with a book from December through March?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. I have a motion to approve the Historical Society Story Walk from April and May, for April and May, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
When you change up the book, let us know. We'll give you a shout out then.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so now we're moving on to our public hearing for the tax classification. Select, so I have to open up the public hearing. Select Board for the Town of Cohasset will conduct a public hearing under Chapter twenty, Section fifty six, as amended by Chapter seventy nine of the Acts of nineteen eighty three on Tuesday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five, at seven ten PM at ninety one Sawyer Street, Cohasset, Mass. O two, O two, five. The public can attend via the Zoom platform. Details for access to the Zoom platform for this hearing will be posted on the Select Board's agenda. That was posted last week. The agenda will be available online at www.cohassetma.gov in the Meetings, Hearing Notices of the Calendar section located at the bottom of the front page of the website. The purpose of the hearing will be to review the issue of allocating the local property tax among the five property classes for fiscal year two thousand and twenty six. The Select Board and the Board of Assessors will provide information regarding the various policy decisions available. All interested persons and or parties wishing to be heard will be afforded the opportunity to be heard at this time. So can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you. So we have our town assessor, Rachel Carlisle, and Mr. Kennedy, are you gonna come up or you? Okay. Kennedy is on the Board of Assessors. Thank you for coming tonight.
Patrick Kennedy, Chair of the Board of Assessors.
Rachel Carlisle, Director of Assessing. So I won't get into too many details. First, I, I always start, I always thank the finance team. We have Beth Mosley this year. She's been a fantastic addition. Super helpful. It's been great working with her so far. So we're looking forward to keeping her around. So to begin, so the, not much has changed this year. We're still at ninety four percent for the residential share of, and six percent for commercial, industrial and personal property of the valuation, the total valuation, which has been pretty steady for the last few years. Nothing's really changed. Total value overall has gone up six point eight percent. On average, residential was about six point seven percent and commercial was seven point three, three percent this year. We've had some decent permits and a few sales that, that, so the, so it's kind of balanced, the, the, the increase was balanced this year with the residential and commercial, which is good to see. As far as the levy limit, significant information on this page, the growth, we hit, we're over a million dollars in growth, a million twenty, two hundred and thirty seven. That's the first time we've ever been over a million. So we've had, again, a lot of significant permits. We had the Harbor condos that really increased the residential. I do not expect that this will happen next year. Probably one and done. Yeah, so definitely, I mean, there are some good permits coming up in the future still. I think there's some commercial warehouse, hang a lumber permit for four million. So there's, there's still stuff going on, a couple.
Perhaps a self-storage on.
Exactly, self-storage. I think we have residential, we have a few multimillion dollar permits. Our, our plans as far as splits for lands, not as many as we had last year. We had a few bigger splits, Black Horse Lane. There were three, four splits there. So we had some, some good land values, but not as much this year coming up. Them also, so debt exclusion, two hundred and eighty one thousand, three hundred and sixty two. I actually broke out the debt exclusion and the stabilization funds this year. So, and then the increase to the stabilization fund, so it's two million, three hundred and fifty seven, five hundred. Leaving us with the maximum allowable levy of fifty one million, nine hundred and forty two, three hundred and seventy four. And we are leaving twenty five thousand, five hundred and forty for the access levy capacity. So and then I included, this packet is, will be online. Actually, I'm gonna have Kevin post it tomorrow and we'll have, we have some at the town hall. They're already out. So anyone who, who wants it can get it.
Be on the Assessor's website.
The Assessor's website, yep. So it's available and I can actually email it to anyone too, if they want. There's some, some historical information I added this year. And then as far as the tax rate, we are, we'll be at eleven thirty five or a uniform, if we choose to keep it at it as a uniform rate. The average single-family home went up about six percent. It's went to a million, one million, four hundred and eighty one thousand, four hundred and thirty seven dollars. The average tax bill went up about five hundred and seventy two dollars, which is a three point five percent increase. And we actually, the tax rate actually went down twenty three cents last, twenty twenty five, it was eleven fifty eight. And the tax attributed to the debt, the tax rate attributed to that is fifty eight cents. So fifty eight out of the eleven. Out of the, exactly. So if we didn't have that, it would be in the, you know, be fifty eight cents less. And then I included a graph with the average tax, the average single-family, the average tax bill actually. And then, so most importantly, what we're here to decide is if you see the shift, you can see on this page the max shift of fifty percent. If you look at the average single-family, to save three percent of the average single-family tax bill, so that's about five hundred and forty eight dollars. It would increase the commercial by eight thousand dollars. So it would it would eight thousand, four hundred and two dollars. So that would be, and we want, would be a big shift. And, you know, saving a small amount and, you know, and we have such a small commercial base anyways. We want to be business friendly. So, and that is pretty much it. Do you want me to review the votes or do you just?
Um, no, well, we can have, we can have conversations about it. Thank you for.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you for all this work and it's I think it's important for people to understand that even though the, the rate goes down because the whole dollar amount is a fixed amount that we can raise the tax levy.
Yes.
And, and so it's, the rate is a function of the, the value, the value that we had plus two and a half percent.
The, the rate is a, it's, so it's kind of. Yeah, so the, the levy, so we have last year's levy limit. That's the, the max that you can raise, raise taxes. And then you take, and then you add the two and a half percent, you add the new growth and the debt exclusion and the overrides.
Okay.
And then that gives you, that is on, that's on the levy limit phase.
The whole amount.
That gives you the whole, the max allowable levy. And then you have the actual levy, which is the next amount. The estimated tax levy, which is that fifty one thousand, nine hundred and sixteen, eight thirty four. And then we're leaving the twenty five thousand on the table. So that's, you're not raising to the complete max, but we're close. We're close. And then you take that and you divide it by the overall value of the town.
Couple key things about the way you get to this. One is the valuations for two thousand and twenty six, fiscal year two thousand and twenty six, are based on two thousand and twenty four calendar year sales.
Correct.
So we're always trailing the market, if you will, by about a year, a little more than a year. Secondly, one of the key things that Rachel raised, I want to make sure maybe the public understands is the last couple of years, we've gotten tremendous boost to our revenues and tax base through new growth. And this year, more than a million dollars in tax, in raised tax dollar, we expect to raise this if everybody pays it, tax dollars to the coffers of the town. That's not gonna be the case for many years going forward unless, unless something significant, new projects come online. So we've had a couple of years where we've had some budget challenges. We've had some budget surpluses, primarily because we've had on the surplus side, very strong new growth. That may not be the case in twenty seven, twenty eight. So it, it just means I think everyone's gonna have to be relatively, or even more so than in the past, fiscally conservative to ensure that we're balancing the budget properly. So.
And that's, I have to say, it's happening. Like, I was at Waymouth's classification hearing last night and it's, it's happening everywhere. It's not just local to Cohasset. It's, it's same thing.
Because of the, the new growth.
Yeah, yeah, same. Yeah. So they, again, they had, Waymouth had developments. I'm not sure if, you know, COVID timing, whatever. But the, the commercial especially now, they're, they actually have a split rate and they're starting to get away, they're shifting it down less and, and moving it back towards the residential. So trying to be, again, business friendly. So, and it, and it is happening in most towns.
Any questions, Mr. Grady?
No.
Mr. Farag?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Flex?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Okay. So Cohasset historically has had one uniform tax rate, right, for commercial and, and and residential. So how, is that one of the motions here?
Yeah, I think it's bottom, the red.
He's not adopted. Okay.
Second, first?
Well, each, each one, so the, it's, there's something about the small commercial exemption.
The second one is the red cancel factor.
Okay. So we'll go through each motion then. So I make a motion, I'd like to, someone to make a motion that the town of Cohasset does not adopt a residential exemption for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. So you want me to read what this, okay, let me, let me read this. Okay. So, so the residential exemption, the Select Board may approve a residential exemption of up to twenty percent of the average assessed value of all class one residential property. This exemption shifts the tax burden from owner-occupied residential property to non-owner-occupied residential property. Because the residential exemption must be borne by the residential class alone and the owner-occupied residential dwellings are approximately ninety-five percent of this class, there's no tangible benefit to this class of property. A residential exemption is one method resort towns like Burnstable adopt to provide tax relief for its permanent residents. Large cities such as Boston, Chelsea, Everett, and Somerville has, have also adopted the exemption to provide tax relief for owner-occupied residential property. And historically, the Select Board has voted no on the residential exemption. Clear?
Yeah.
Okay. So may I have a motion that the town of Cohasset does not adopt a residential exemption for fiscal year twenty twenty-six? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ellen.
Oh, yes.
Just want to make sure, a, an I vote is against the residential exemption, correct?
Correct.
Most of the motion was not to.
Not to.
Yeah, the motion is not to.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
Yep.
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay. So then the next motion is called the residential factor. In the town of Cohasset for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, the residential class is approximately ninety-four percent and commercial, industrial, and personal property is approximately six percent. Anecdotal evidence suggests that towns whose CIP is between twenty and twenty-five percent cautiously begin to consider a split tax rate. So we're at six.
Correct.
Not, not.
I don't think we'll ever be at twenty.
Twenty to twenty, twenty and twenty-five percent. Once split, it's very difficult to go back to a single tax rate without placing burden on the residential class. A split tax rate may be considered anti-business and may discourage business from locating in a community. In Cohasset, to save the residential class, three percent on taxes, you need to charge the commercial, industrial, personal property taxpayers an additional fifty percent. A residential factor of one will result in a single tax rate. In adopting a single tax rate, a single rate for all is consistent with past practices. And the Board of Assessors recommends a residential factor of one, which is a single tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Anyone have any questions on that?
Yeah.
Nope. So may I have a motion for the town of Cohasset to adopt a residential factor of one, a single tax rate fiscal year twenty twenty-six?
Don't move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Um, all in favor? Roll call.
Just one question. So that means that we're doing business as usual, not putting more on the commercial rate.
Correct, correct. And a little tax rate for everyone.
Eleven thirty-five.
Eleven thirty-five for everyone.
Okay, so Mr. Farag made the motion, Mr. Grady seconded. I know.
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
And Ellen Mar, aye. Okay. And last, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We're almost through.
Okay, so this is the small commercial exemption. The Select Board may approve an exemption of up to ten percent of class three or commercial properties that employ less than ten employees annually, a certified by the Director of Labor and Workforce Department, and have assessed values of less than one million dollars. This exemption shifts the tax burden within the commercial class and the exemption goes to the building owner. Problems with this exemption, all eligible properties are not necessarily included on the listing. All businesses must qualify in a building and property owners do not always pass the tax savings to their small business tenants. There are currently fourteen out of the three hundred and fifty-one communities in Massachusetts who have adopted this exemption. They are Auburn, Avon, Bellingham, Berlin, Braintree, Chelmsford, Dartmouth, Irving, New Ashford, North Attleboro, Secombe, Swampscut, Westford, and Rentham. And all of these communities have a split tax rate. And historically, the Select Board has voted no on the small commercial exemption. Board of Assessors recommends a no vote on the small commercial exemption for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Does anyone have any questions? On this? No? Okay. So can I have a motion that the town of Cohasset does not adopt the small commercial exemption for fiscal year twenty twenty-six?
Don't move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
And Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you. So, anything else? Now, what to, thank you for your good work in the commission, Mr. Kennedy, for, for all the good work that you guys do. We appreciate it. And on, on to point twenty-seven.
Onto telling the state D O R that, that you guys have acted.
Good, we have acted. That's next. Yeah, okay, everything approved.
All right. So we are, have concluded with our public hearing. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing with tax rate classification?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
And Ellen Mar, aye. Thanks very much. Okay, so next up is, okay, board and committee update. So we have interviews and appointments, Cohasset Cultural Council, Paula Almeida, is she here? Please come up. And your name and address, please?
Yes, Paula Almeida, thirty-eight Sorry Drive.
Thank you, thank you for coming and thank you for applying to the Cohasset Cultural Committee. We received your application. Is there anything special you just want to tell us?
Well, I, you know, been a resident for over forty-five years in the town and my children, certainly, you know, members of the school, the schools here. And, you know, just knowing what has gone, you know, on, in this town in the past. Have a many years. I'd like to see a lot continue. And, you know, there's just so many things that can be done, you know.
Right.
So I've been very happy and I'm still here. I am, I am actually a widow now, so I intend to stay.
Okay. That's great. This is, this is a great council that I feel like we're kind of getting some rejuvenation to it. A lot of interest, people applying to be on it. So thank you for your application.
And I'm, I'm a former first grade teacher of almost thirty years and having worked with young children and actually been on committees, you know, to really get grants and, you know, get more there for kids and for actually even adults. So I, you know, I just think that it would be something that would be of interest to me too.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Almeida? No. I want to say, did you have a son, Tommy?
No, Stephen.
Oh, Stephen, okay. Okay, I thought it was in school of the Tommy Almeida. Okay, so may I have a motion to appoint Paula Almeida to the Cohasset Cultural Council?
Don't move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
And Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Okay, next up is the Post Employment Benefits Committee, Mr. Owen Berry. So here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, Owen Berry, fifteen Bancroft Road. Thank you for having me.
Sure, thank you for applying.
Thank you.
For being recruited.
Yeah. I, I guess that's what I get for opening my mouth at town meeting. But no, I think that looking at the long-term ramifications of the retirement, the post-employment is going to be one of the bigger issues that not just Cohasset, but all towns kind of face moving forward. And having a history of working with small businesses and individuals on retirement planning and everything, I think that that plus my background with health insurance and everything really allows me to look into and actually enjoy going through a lot of the documents that would put most people to sleep. So, I hope, you know, I have an opportunity to work on something that's gonna have a long-lasting positive effect for the town.
Great, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
No.
No? No. I appreciated your question at special town meeting. I thought it was, you know, insightful and, and well-prepared for the topic. And Mr. Davis is here, along with Mr. Davis and Ms. Dugan and the other members of the committee that have done unbelievable work for the town of Cohasset, got us ahead of the curve before most of the, the Commonwealth had even been thinking about it. And they keep us honest, they keep us focused on our obligations and commitments. And, and the work they did with Norfolk County too was especially, especially helpful to our budgetary situation. So we appreciate you volunteering. We appreciate you speaking up at special town meeting. Keep doing it. And, and that's all. And if you ever have any questions, you can reach out to any of us or, or the town office or, and we're happy, happy to, to be there to support you in this endeavor.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure. So can I have a motion to appoint Mr. Owen Berry to the Post Employment Benefit Committee?
Don't move. Thank you.
May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
And Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you. Thank you for, for volunteering.
Absolutely. Looking forward to working with everybody.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Davis, did you have a P E B update for us or nothing since special town meeting?
Update, I didn't want to, I didn't, wasn't really on the agenda. It wasn't on the agenda in the past, but I came off the agenda. So we are going to reschedule that.
Okay, okay, sounds good. So the other item on our agenda is capital budget. It's just to announce, we have an opening. Kind of a sad day. We all, we all kind of had to bow our head in prayer when Ms. Dugan announced that she couldn't be on capital budget anymore. She took a full-time municipal position in another community and there were just too many conflicts. And anyone who knows Katie loves Katie and all the work that she does is unbelievable, unbelievable. She's got an incredible mind. So there is an opening and we will be accepting applications until December first to fill that. It's an immediate opening. Capital budget is ongoing and they're meeting. And then once all the applications are in, the Troyka, which is the town moderator, the chair of the Select Board and the chair of the Advisory Committee meet, interview, and then meet the applicants and, and make a decision. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to get it out there to the public that we have an opening. And so we've done that. Okay, next up, RTF Advisory Group Discussion. So, Mr. Farag, I think that was your agenda.
Yeah, sure. It was in my, we're probably working. This has been brought up before on a previous agenda to appoint, and this is for discussion purposes, but to appoint an advisory group for the recycling transfer station. Now, before it had to do with more, more, obviously, if there was an enterprise fund to go along with it. But even with an enterprise fund being there, I, I still think there should be an advisory group appointed to, to review the RTF and, and kind of unearth and get down to all the management. Cause there's, you know, there's lots of things there since it's been redone and there's still lots to do. So there's, you know, a look at the employment contracts, creating a, you know, capital budget for it, finishing off some of the construction that needs to be done and, and closing out the insurance, of course, because we had the fire there. And there's a bunch of new potential improvements as well as far as on, that, that might happen. So I think all those need to be sort of unearthed by an advisory group and then, and then brought to the Select Board. You know, with the Select Board agenda as it is week after week, meeting after meeting, I, I just don't think it's gonna give it the, the right amount of time that you're gonna need to get into some of these issues. So, but we talked about it before, we talked about having a, a Select Board member, we talked about having the, the head of the RTF, the manager there, and then, and then having a, a few citizens out there. And we did announce it at town meeting. So I just think it's something that we should put a charge to. And then, and then if, if the board wants to do that, we could, you know, announce it here tonight that we would, you know, want that from people and see who would want to step up to the plate to be on that, that committee. But again, it would be advisor, but I just think to get, to get down to the details there in the RTF and unearth all of the costs on, on both sides, electric, the expenses and the revenues, and then, and then to have them so that everyone can understand them easily. So I think that would, that would be helpful going forward and it would really help turn around the management there from what we've, what we've had in the past. And of course, having our new manager there has been, it's been fantastic and it's been such a change. As I've said before, if you remember, if you go to the RTF, which most people do, for years, we, we sat there and we dumped our cardboard into a laundry basket that we had an employee turn around and dump into a, you know, what was the, the crusher there. Now, it had to be done because of safety rules, but it was, it was the most useless point for labor to use that and be doing that for about fifteen years. And that's all changed with, with the way everything's gone. So everything is much more efficient now and there's still more efficiencies that can be had. So that's, that's sort of the, the underpits of this.
Anyone on the board have any comments or questions? We have talked about this, so it's not, it's not really news. Mr. Flex?
So, support learning more about what's going on at the RTF. Just, this seems like the kind of thing where we would normally just have the manager of the RTF or Mr. Joyce come in and talk to us about it, as opposed to forming a committee with a mandate and all the friction that can go with that. So would appreciate some insight into why we would propose what sounds like a committee between the Select Board and the RTF management, instead of just having the RTF management talk to us about what's going on at the RTF.
A good question. I, I think the thing with this is, is that while the, the manager has been in the business for many years, I think that getting citizen involvement would certainly help. You know, when we were looking forward to potentially doing the enterprise fund, you know, it did come out about looking at, and especially one of the things that is probably gonna move forward is, is the pilot program. And if that does move forward, to be able to monitor that and to be able to take the input from it, from the citizens, it'd sort of be the, be, be the conduit to, to receive that. And I, I think that that would be helpful to just get, get some citizen involvement into it and, and brought up, and just bring up some new ideas that, that might help as well. So I, I just think there's a lot to unearth there and, and that again, this, it would be an advisory group. It would not be, they would not have, it's not like a commission or something like that. So that's, that's why.
Mr. Grady, any comments?
I have to concur with Mr. Flex. It's, I just think that the enterprise fund that you pass got a pretty efficient system going on right now under Mr. Joyce and, and Mr. Marquetti. And we are, you know, a town that's open to the public. So I just think a committee, you know, could muddy the waters. Again, there's no, it's with the enterprise man feeling at town meetings. So I think that just creating another committee might just muddy the operation a little bit. It could. So I encourage again with Mr. Flex and just think it's, might just turn some sort of busy work.
Okay, um, I hear, you know, I, I hear the perspective on that. I think it's always good to get citizen input. I think something that we're, hopefully we've all learned in the last year or two is how, how valuable citizen input is to us and to charge a group. I don't see this as a longstanding group, but the one, while we are undergoing a change at the RTF, have been undergoing a change. We have traffic cameras up, we have data being collected, we have service levels being improved. And with or without an enterprise fund, with or without a revolving fund, we're gonna have to monitor the expenses and, and the revenues. And I think, I think it doesn't, it doesn't hurt anything to get citizen input. And either the group organically fizzles out because everything seems to be moving in the direction that we have planned it to move in, or they come to us with some, some good ideas and we can, we can make it a short-term thing. We can, I mean, it's not a standing committee. It's, it's, it's much like a work, you know, in my opinion, it would be much like a working group to say, hey, these are some changes that we've done. I would rather know about problems and issues in real time. And not that Mr. Joyce and Mr. Marquiony won't come and tell us what they are. I would rather know about problems and issues in real time and not that Mr. Joyce and Mr. Mar, Marquione won't come and tell us what they are, but I also think it's important to hear from, from the citizens that things that we all might take for granted. Um, but other, other people might not from a, from an end user perspective. And that's really what it is. They're end users of the facility. Whereas um, you know, management is not. Um, I don't think it could hurt anything and um, I, I don't, I don't see what, what the downside, what the downside is.
Well, um, go ahead, yeah.
My only concern on that, it was a charge maybe for a short period of time, but again, you get into unless it's really defined reporting structures. Again, it's a DPW operation. Frank is running the show. And again, citizen input isn't invaluable. It's uh, extremely important. Um, I'm worried that you run into the risk of having too many cooks in the kitchen. That's, that's and there's no, um, I've seen that on some committees that worked on, so uh, we run some difficulties and um, that's all.
Well, so, so I hear what you're saying and, and so then, then we have to make, you, you know, the charge very clear. You know, as an advisory group, they can make recommendations. They're not, not decision makers and um, and with Mr. Marquione on the committee, um, he would be hearing it firsthand. Um, so um,
I think it's good. I think, uh, because it's on for discussion tonight.
Yeah.
You know, we're kind of sussing it out.
Yeah.
Whether we want or not. So, I, I think we can certainly put on for maybe the next meeting because we are missing one here.
Right.
Um, one of the select board members and then maybe at that point, if we came up with a, a charge, then then it could be something that could be compiled to a, to a vote. Um, because I, I do think it's a couple of the things that you're mentioning. Um, I, I think it, it depends on the charge. I think you're right. If, if, if it's just left open that you're the advisory committee and you're going to do a few things and then everything else under the sun, um, you could have things go sideways. If, if you keep it uh, tied to that they're going to do these particular things that the select board needs done. Um, I think that's another story. And then also, um, it can be sunset for even just a year to, to just flush out the initial issues um, that, that, that need to be found out there. Um, you know, just like a, a cat, we have new equipment, but I mean, uh, you know, even just a capital plan for everything. Um, you know, when, when these things are going to need to be re, redone. So, I, I think that um, a tight a tight uh, charge and then, you know, the next meeting might be able to be put up for a vote up or down at that point.
Mr. Flex?
I would just add to what Mr. Farag said that uh, if we're going to establish this group, I would want to make sure it's doing something that couldn't otherwise be done because uh, from my perspective, I don't want citizen input through a committee. I'd rather hear citizen input from the citizen directly. If we're going to be getting financial updates on what's going on at the RTF, I don't think we need a committee to do that. And if we're talking about innovative ideas for what to do with the RTF, uh, it uh, again, I'd rather hear from people who have expertise in running an RTF, not filtered through a committee for our consideration. If there's a problem at the RTF that we feel like a committee is best suited to address, okay. I'm not seeing that. I'm not hearing that in what we're talking about tonight. Yeah, we'd all like it to be built up a little faster, but you know, that's just the nature of a lot of the things that we do. So, if this is going to be doing something that we wouldn't otherwise have, I can support it. I haven't heard that yet. So that's for further discussion.
Okay, okay, um. So this was just on for a discussion, not, not for a vote. Um, we haven't met since special town meeting. And we are going to have a lot of work we're going to have to do on the RTF um, from a financial perspective. And I believe Ms. Leary and Mr. Joyce have been already working on some things and um, identifying you know, in this year's budget because it's an impact in this year's budget, what we have to do. So, um, we will move on then. Um, put this on when we have a full board. Okay, project updates. Ms. Leary, one thirty-five King Street?
So, one thirty-five King Street, um, there's the Public Safety Facilities Working Group. They've been meeting weekly. Um, they've identified some weaknesses in the, in the prior plans, which one was communication. So they're heavily working on communication plans to make sure the community is aware of everything that's going on within the group. Um, something's come up countless times. I don't know if they've made a decision on it yet or not, but the fire union is now taking part in these meetings and the need for the substation seems to be going by the wayside. Um, they are going to make it ready for future substation if needed. They're going to have a tag there. Um, but as of right now, as far as I know at the committee, they're looking towards getting rid of the substation, making it um, solely of police headquarters for the time being in EOC. Um, like I said, I don't know if our final decision has been made, but that's where things are heading with that project.
So, I'll, I'll save my comments. Mr. Brady?
No, I'm part of it. I'll see comments.
Okay, Mr. Farag?
Um, I'll, I'll be interested to see how it uh, turns out as, because I know they're, they're looking at a number of different factors in it. The one factor I would bring up um, to people is that when we're comparing ourselves to other towns, um, there's going to be a new uh, urgent care medical center in in the stop and shop uh, parking lot, which you've seen, which is going, it's not open yet, but it's going to. And that, that is going to be a magnet because you only go to urgent care when you need urgent care. So if there's anything beyond uh, getting a stitch here or there or something like that, uh, the ambulance in the town is going to be called for that. And that is going to be a magnet, not just for Cohasset residents. It's going to be a magnet for Hull, Hingham, uh, Situate, uh, potentially Norwell and maybe some Waymouth. Uh, because you don't have, the, the closest one here is in Marshfield. If you know on Route one thirty-nine, there's an urgent care there. And there's a couple in Waymouth, but they're not over the line there in Hingham, you know, you know, by, down by the, their, their other harbor. So, I would just say that that has to be brought into the calculation when you're looking at what are going to be the needs of the fire department and the responses. So beyond having evoke, beyond having sunrise assisted living, beyond having one of the worst intersections in America at Beechwood and three A. Um, that has accidents on whether on, almost a daily basis. Um, you're going to have this urgent care and if someone goes in there with pneumonia and they collapse or something like that, that ambulance is going to have to take that person and go. And so that's going to be another reason why we're going to need that second ambulance ready to go and up and running. So, um, I just put that in that that has to be a part of the calculation and I'm sure they're, they're aware of that, but I just want to bring that up to everybody sitting there at home if they, if they didn't know that yet. Thank you.
Mr. Flex?
Um, looking forward to the conversation. Uh, I'm jealous. I'm sure you're doing, just keep an eye on the costs. That's going to be the first thing that people pay attention to on this. I know you're already doing that. I just feel like I have to say it out loud, so.
Yeah, that, that was where I was going to go with it as, as we start to, you know, communicate to the public, I think, if at all possible, um, I, I think there's some, some material out there that says, okay, well, what, what is a Sally port? Well, we can tell people what a Sally port is and why we need one, but what's it going to cost? What, what part of, what part of the whole budget is a Sally port? What part of the whole budget is, is a um, you know, emergency management center? What part of the whole budget are, are the cells? Because I think people might be shocked at how much the construction is to, to build the facilities for the, for the holding cells and all of the accommodations with restrooms and things like that. And I think if you start to dollar out these things, um, people, and, and I know that you can't, we can't dollar out everything precisely because some are just, you know, overall costs. But um, I, that, that seems to be, I, I, I don't think, I haven't run into a single person who, who has said, no, we don't need a new police station. I think everyone says we, we do need a new one and, and it's the cost uh, uh, of it. Um, and I, I'm sure the working group and I, I don't want to come across as if I'm second guessing because I'm, I'm not, okay? But not having a fire annex up there. And this is a rhetorical question. Is it being driven by cost or some other factor? Because we have spent so much time, we've spent two years talking about how important it is to have a fire annex up there. And some people might not think ninety seconds to the far end of Beechwood is important or the north end of Cohasset is important. I think it's critically important. And um, we need to be sure that the reason that we're leaving it there for a future build is not going to impact lives. Um, and it shouldn't be impacted by staff, by other issues that might be out there. And that, that's how I, that's how I feel about the annex. Um, it, it's been part of the project and now it's not for whatever reasons. Sure.
The annex has not thoroughly been taken away.
Okay, good.
All right. But I understand the need for one, the want for one. I'm an advocate for it. But this working group is fairly robust, wouldn't you agree? It's from people all over and people from the past and showing, um, and hopefully what it's doing is taking in opinions from people all over town. Mr. Tarpe is on it. An invaluable member. And again, in a purple world, we'd have an annex, we'd have everything, but it'll shovel ready for the annex. And again, I'm not turning it down. If it comes out that we can get one in there, that's great. But also having the, the fire personnel is showing up to the meetings and it's not just based on what their needs are. It's based on responses and everything like that. And you know, we've also heard from the chief that police should be the first on the scene. So we have to look at the whole thing holistically and what is the town itself going to accept when they vote for a building like this? You know, how much are they going to accept? And so it's a tough, it's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
You know, again, in a purple world, we'd be driving by a police and fire station on three A, but if say Cohasset instead. I don't think we have the appetite for that or the need for something that big, but um, we do have to take into account what the town is willing to accept. And that's what this group, again, anybody's welcome to come to leave. Um, see it. Uh, and it can be frustrating because, you know, again, I'm an advocate for an annex. I'd like to have a police and fire presence up there. It was probably the genesis of the building at the beginning. But we also have to take into account, what are we going to get through? The one critical point that we have right now in this town is we do not have a police station. We don't. We don't have a functioning police station. We do have a functioning fire department. It needs some improvement. It needs more. Maybe it needs that annex, but that's going to be fleshed out. And that's where you, that you're looking into opening up more in staffing, manning and hours and things like that. So, but to go down to the basics, it's what the town itself is going to accept.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we've heard about the ten point four, we've explained it, um, but there's still some PTSD over that. Understandable. But we have to build from there and, and again, see what the town will, will allow. For lack of a better word, but everybody at that table is trying to round table and bring it around to something that is presentable. So no one's kicking things off. You know, we do hear from the fire folks about response times. There's been a number of things brought up. I'll throw it out there. Getting up over through the train station, using that, if it was, if it was bridge crossing. You know, looking at actual response times. And so, um, and taking into account that the police are first on the scene and the fire, they have a great working relationship. So, I don't like to kick the annex out. I'm just saying it's and that's what we're really going to say until it starts to iron up, but we've got to look at other, other, you know, other options.
Okay, thank you. Um, lacrosse wall.
So the lacrosse wall is installed. It's ready for use. It's completed. Um, kids have a great time. I saw some kids playing there over the weekend, which was wonderful. Um, so that project is done. The only thing left there is seeding. Um, obviously they're not going to do it right now because they're not, but they will be back in the spring to make sure that that's done. Um, so actually the lacrosse ball wraps up our recreation projects. Um, the tennis courts are complete. The lacrosse wall has been installed. Um, the bathrooms at Milligan Field are done. The dugouts have been completed. Um, so our entire recreation project has been completed.
Well done.
Michelle, thank you. So, you shoved these projects through and we wouldn't have it done without you.
We'll let you take a breath before we start the next round.
It's more recreation.
I don't think it had been striped for a couple of days and I got a text from someone who went up there on one of the beautiful days we had and played and they're like, we're so happy.
Yeah, so we're getting a lot of positive feedback, which is nice.
Yeah.
Um, so next is the town hall renovations. Um, obviously the group is working um, tirelessly on this. The facilities team is working daily on the town hall renovation project. The fire suppression system is underway. Um, they will be completed, um, probably just after the first of the year. Um, with that portion, we did send out an RFQ for designers. Uh, we received two back. Um, we're interviewing both tomorrow, um, to choose the design team that works best for the town. Um, and that design team is going to be tasked with um, space planning efforts as well as window um, specifications, door specifications, any exterior specifications. Um, and they're also going to have a project management component to their um, design team. So that'll help facilities quite a bit. Um, and we should be able to choose the design firm after the interviews tomorrow. We can come to a consensus fairly quickly and send out a notice of award to the design team as soon as next week. So we can really hit the ground running with that. Um, once they're on board, like I said, we can then get those design specifications for the windows done. Um, put those out to bid, get the windows installed, and then we can move on to the HVAC. Um, there's been a lot of talk about the HVAC system and when it can be installed versus the windows and how it's going to um, take into consideration the grant funding. Um, what we learned through Green Communities is there's a one-time decarbonization grant for five hundred thousand dollars that we can apply for in April. Um, and if we are awarded, we'll receive that award in July, which will work in conjunction with the HVAC system um, work underway. So therefore, that grant could substantially decrease our liability to pay for the HVAC system. So we're going to pursue that grant.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just had one comment on it, nothing.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you. I just want to say, um, I, I've been very pleased with the facilities team and all the work that they've done um, with their portion of the project and what they can do. Um, it's going to take time, as we know, within, in doing everything because there's different parts that are moving um, with outside, going to eventually be outside contractors, our facilities team. Um, as you said, with the RFQ for the, the people that coming in to design, you know, some of the, the windows and things. So, uh, but everything that they've done so far has, has been great and it's, it's uh, it's helped the town greatly and uh, been moving this project forward. So thank you.
Town manager update, open positions.
Um, so the town has several open positions um, at this time. Um, one being the director of public health. Um, we received thirty-three applications. Um, Megan James met with the um, the born a health team this evening to talk about the applicants that they have to see who that they'd like to move forward for an interview. Um, I haven't caught up with her since then. It just happened tonight. Um, but we're actively recruiting for that position and we're hoping to have it filled sooner than later. Um, the next would be the social worker position at Elder Affairs. Um, that was posted November seventh. Um, we have two applicants at the present time for that position. So that's an ongoing active position. Um, next we have the heavy equipment operator full-time in the DPW. That's an ongoing effort. Um, it seems as if we hire one, we lose one. Um, but we're always looking for the HEOs, whether it be part-time, full-time, anytime. Um, we're, we're always looking. So we're actively interviewing for that position as well. Um, many may have heard that the DPW lost their operations assistant. Um, we had an internal candidate decide to move over to DPW, which leaves a hole in the which leaves a hole in the um selectman's office, the the selectman's office, as well as um the town manager's office. So Tracy Connors has accepted the position of the D P W. Um, and we are now looking for an administrative assistant to the select board and the town manager. Um, we have some interviews starting this week. Um, we don't have a tremendous amount of applicants at the present time. Um, but we're hoping that through the holidays, we'll we'll get some. Um, and then lastly, the finance director position, that's a position that we've been talking about for quite some time. Um, that still remains open. Um. And I believe we are going to repost that after the first of the year.
Any comments or questions?
I've I've got one. The finance director is one of the things that that, you know, that's missing is also um the town manager and how we're going to deal with that. But I think the finance director is something that we that the town needs um first. Uh, and probably as soon as we can, as soon as possible. And that beyond posting it, I I wonder if we should get a firm um to help with that search, just the same thing that you would do trying to find a town manager. Um, because with some of the positions that are open now, with with obviously, we have an interim town manager, but we have to, you know, put together a committee for that, and then you're going to have the finance director. Um, it's really a reset of of the town government on on all these positions. So um, I just think that the finance director, again, it's 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 a crucial position for the town. Uh, and especially, I think it's something that can be found before uh a town manager search begins. Um, when we talk about that, you know, doing, because the bylaw, the the bylaw, the town bylaws, um, we have to go out and do a search for town manager. We have to get a selection committee, and then then they're charging off. They go and do their thing. And we might have to use, obviously, a firm with that uh to assist with that. But I do think that that the um the finance director should come first. And part of the reason is is that with the town managers, we're just getting into budget season. So if you put out tomorrow and say, hey, we want a town manager, and then we get the whole bunch of candidates, they're all going to be interviewing in the same time when everyone's trying to do their budgets. So um, it's going to be very difficult. You're going to run into the same thing that we ran into where, you know, the the town manager, potentially another town, if they wanted to to try this, look at this position, is going to have to, you know, do that in the middle of budget season, which might not be appropriate. So um, I I just think we need to do finance director first, and then we can figure out the timing uh on the town manager following that. Thank you.
Mr. Plex, anything?
Nope. I appreciate all the work that's going into this. I agree that we need a finance director. Uh. Maybe it could work in parallel with the town manager. I they're both so urgent. Uh, but no slight to Michelle there. It's just, it's a lot of work. Uh, so. I support moving forward on all of them. Sorry.
Mr. Grady?
Yeah. Um, are these comments are just part of the other discussion?
It's probably the open to open positions.
Well, I want to thankfully stepping up to the plate. Um. Grabbing the ball, running across the field with it. Not only pass as assistant town manager, but as interim town manager, acting town manager. Um. You fill the slot right now. I just want to thank you. Thank you. I'm bad for myself personally, and I like to say the town, but uh I think they're speaking themselves anyways. But again, my thanks personally.
Okay, um, the um, I concur with um missed Mr. Farag and Mr. Plex on the finance director and of course with Mr. Grady on his sentiments. Um. I I know the holidays, everyone says, oh, you don't post a job during the holidays. You don't know, you know, what's going to happen. I I don't, what would it hurt to post the job now, other than the other than the posting might get stale? I mean, we could put it out there for for three or four weeks and see if we get any bites. Maybe people are looking to make a move before budget season starts. Maybe they're looking at, I don't want to go through this in my town. Again, because we have no money, we're going to need another override. It's going to get shot down. Maybe there are people who don't just want to do that again. So um, I feel like that every day at my job. Um, but I just think that what what would it hurt to to put it out there to to float it a little bit? To say that we're we're looking for somebody, and if we don't get any bites right away, we can take it down.
It is posted.
Finance director is not posted.
It's posted on the M M A.
Extremely stale, but still up.
Yeah, so.
Look, I did see it. Did see it.
Yeah, so so if you would check that out, um, and I I don't think there's any any harm. And then if it gets to a point where we're not getting any bites, then then maybe to Mr. Parag's point, we we bring in some some outside help to source and um and and we go from there. Um. So that's that that's my only comment on that.
We just follow up on it just briefly. Um, yeah, I believe we should probably get firm in as soon as we can because we've put it out for a couple of years and for a number of reasons it didn't happen. And the reason is that you'd want a firm is is that um the ones that typically do that look for town managers, uh, they have a network of, first of all, most of the firms that do that search for town managers are ex-town managers themselves. And then on top of that, they have a rolodex of people that they've either placed or are are there right now. And you're going to get potential candidates for that finance director from the strength of relationships. And it's going to be relationships we don't have. Um, and and that that we probably don't even have within the South Shore. So um, I think if if we get a get a firm, we have a better chance of hosting it, not just waiting for what the MMA or anybody there, you know, throws at us, but um they can put out the word uh that that we're looking for one, and and you might have a town manager in another town say, geez, there's somebody I know and they, you know, they just retired and they would love to do it, or they moved to the South Shore. We don't know. But I do think it's going to be on, it's going to come through relationships. It's going to come through relationships that that this town or are or that anybody has. And I think that's how we're going to find a a finance director if we're lucky. Thanks.
So do you have to put out an R F P for a search firm thing? Because because of the money, isn't that?
So we we can find, we can seek proposals from firms, so you can select which firm you think would work best um for the finance director search. I don't think it hurts to put it out ourselves as well. Um. And see if we get any bites.
Okay. Okay. Okay, great. Um, select for comments. Mr. Grady?
I'm good tonight, your comments.
Mr. Farag?
I I think I've said enough. I think we we've covered all the subjects, so I'll 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 leave it there so we can end the night somewhat early. Thank you.
Mr. Plex?
I promise I'll be fast. Uh, Craig McLellan and I met with some folks from the group that brought forth the citizens petition for a full-day kindergarten at town meeting. Uh, I think it was a productive meeting with those folks, lots of good discussion and back and forth. A few things that Craig and I will be following up on is uh taking a look at different ways that we can connect folks from the community with the select board and the school committee outside of meetings. Uh, I for one rely very heavily on emails and phone calls. My email is sitting right out there on the town website. I hope people use it. Uh, but the feedback there is that there could be more opportunities to connect. So so that's the first one that Craig and I will be following up on. And the second is to uh to follow up on some of the questions that the group had. So Craig and I will be trying to give them a hand there. Uh, and then lastly, just want to say thank you to Michelle. You've stepped up big. You're doing great work, and I wanted to say thank you. We appreciate it.
Great. Um, okay, so I do have a few comments. First of all, I'd like to thank um advisory, the advisory committee, the capital budget committee, um, the select board, Michelle, Mr. Senior, Tracy, Lisa, um, our town moderator, Dan Evans, all of the tellers and all the clerks for special town meeting, um, putting it, pulling it all together. And um it went uh seamlessly. Uh, we didn't get one of the votes we wanted, but that's what town government is all about. So thank you to to all of those groups that participated. Um, I'd like to give a shout out to a Cohasset, a son of Cohasset. His name is David Snowdale. He's a two thousand and eight graduate of Cohasset High School. And at the age of thirty-five, he enlisted in the army, and he's finishing up boot camp this week, and he's having his graduation. And his um his, uh, I don't know the correct word, his classmates in 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 this in this training, call him the old man. And he says he feels it every moment of every day. But I'd like to thank David and his parents for his service to the country and for making this decision at perhaps what is an older age to join the service. Um, and I wish him nothing but success and Godspeed, good health and safety. And then finally, um, the Long Rage Financial Planning Group, we have been meeting pretty regularly, updating the twenty twenty-three plan, which we are finding is more than just an update because so many of the objectives have on that plan have been accomplished or have been um not put, not gone forward with. So we need to come up with with um you know, you know, an update on the initiatives we have, and I'd also kind of like to put it out to people. What do you see are the needs in Cohasset for the next five years, the next ten years in terms of infrastructure and where we want to go? Um, I know the the water treatment facility has has been a topic that we kind of comes in and it goes out, and we never really put our arms around it in in terms of a a a a big, long-term investment. We know what our neighbors in Situate are doing there. Um, but if if any community members have any thoughts about our infrastructure and where we should be, what they'd like to see in the next five or ten years, um, please reach out and um we're we're happy to take any feedback. We are updating all of the peer analysis. We're adding additional peer groups. And we're hopeful we'll have a report out before town meeting um next year, kind of in line with the budget cycle. So those are all of my comments. Um. So now we have uh the minutes to approve. And I think, um, so the first set of minutes are the minutes of October twenty eighth twenty twenty-five. We were all in attendance. Are there any comments or edits to the minutes? Notes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five?
Still move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call, please.
All ready, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of of um sorry, November third, twenty twenty-five?
Still moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Roll call.
All ready, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, and with that, can I have a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-two P M?
Still moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All ready, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you, everybody. See you on the second.